Okay, so good evening and welcome to our special meeting. Today we are interviewing two additional candidates for our open seat on the Community Education Council for District 25. I welcome the two advocates and I'd like to start with the roll call. Both of you. I'm not the roll caller, the roll caller candidate.
One second.
Welcome to the panel.
Present.
Wendy.
Present.
Emery and Abel.
Present.
Joseph, Charlie, and Mr. Van De Weyen. Charlie looking for the calling. Rashmi Prashnaraj.
Present.
Michelle Frederick. Shall I see you? Michelle?
So Michelle is present. I see her there. Alright, okay.
And final player?
Present.
She is calling. I don't know. Put the hand.
Okay, so we need to move forward with a quorum and I believe we do have quorum which is six members present to move forward with this meeting. For those of you that are applying today, Eden Rubenstein and Crystal Gonzalez, I welcome you. I just want you to know that the Community Education Council is made up of 12 members. We have eight elected members and two additional seats that need elected elections for. And we're still waiting for two borough president appointees. So as of right now, we have eight members. We're looking to add two new elected members and we're waiting to hear from our borough president so we can have a full council. We've been able to move forward as a council because we always need to have a quorum which is six members present. Otherwise, we're not able to have any voting rights. So I will jump right into the interviews and I'll be maybe you'll do it this way. If you want to introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about where you're coming from, where your children go to school and why you're interested about joining the Community Education Council. I'm gonna go in alphabetical order. So Crystal Gonzalez, I'll let you go first.
Hi, what do you think everyone? My name is Crystal Gonzalez. Can you back me?
We can hear you back here.
I have a first grader and a third grader.
Okay, now, now we can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm glitching.
Yeah, I am also. Like the screen is going on and off.
Yeah, same here.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, we, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead Crystal, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna put my face closer to the phone, I'm sorry. Good evening, everyone. I'm Crystal Gonzalez. I'm the mother of two wonderful children. I have a first grader and a third grader. They attend PS 29. Before becoming a parent, I worked for a nonprofit organization in Jamaica, Queens. I work with people with mental and developmental disabilities. My duties consisted of accessing the client's needs, advocating for them, and getting additional support for them and their families to help provide them with a better quality of life. I'm currently a stay-at-home mother. I'm on an SLT. This is my second year. I'm the PTA secretary. I'm also Title I chairperson at PS 29. I'm also District 25's D-PAC alternate. I've been a resident of District 25 for seven years now. I'm hoping that I can make changes so our students can achieve their goals and exceed their expectations as well. I hope to gain deeper insight for education relationships between parents, teachers, students. I wish to address their concerns. Excuse me. I wish to address their concerns to ensure that we're able to repair whatever needs fixing while additionally helping our students reach higher standards and become successful in life. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations for applying. We'll get to the questions after we give Eden Rubenstein the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. My name is Eden Rubenstein. I am the mother of two beautiful children. I have a kindergarten daughter and a second grade son at PS 193. I now serve my second year on the PTA as part of the fundraising team and going to plan to continue along that path. This is my first year on our school leadership team with the school. And I've been very, very active along there. I honestly, I work from home, so I'm constantly able to go into the building and step into the school and help out whenever needed. I'm constantly trying to find more ways to get involved in the school community. I've lived in District 25 for nine plus years now. I came from a background of emergency medical services. So I've always been very active in helping and caring for others and I now work in healthcare staffing. So I, my biggest thinking is constantly looking to better education for our children and the standards. I've been very close at looking at those standards this year within the school. So I want to be able to help take a closer look at that for everybody and really look to see how we can help the parents as well as the children to achieve greater standards. So thank you.
Thank you and congratulations for applying. I have to correct myself because I believe I made a misstatement. We have 12 members on the CEC, but that includes our student member. So I apologize. So we have nine elected seats, two borough president appointees, which is 11, and one student member. We currently have eight CEC elected members. So this, these two positions, there's only one position that you're both applying for. I apologize for that. So we will need to vote one of you on to make the ninth member and then we would be full. So I apologize. I wish we could have both of you join us, but it's only gonna be one of you. I'm gonna start with, I'm not gonna take over. I'm gonna ask if any other CEC members have any questions that we can start with the other CEC members and questions for either one of you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Wendy Liu. I'm a new member, first time member of the CEC, so I'm also learning through this process as you may be as well. My question is to both of you. What, any specific issues that you would like to bring to the council that you're both, that interest you, that you pay extra attention to and maybe as a result of your family situation or your, if they're children at school?
What, what, what I thought?
Eden, do you wanna go first? Then Crystal went first or last?
Sure. So I could think of actually two things I would specify on this. I think first is probably when looking at grades this year across the board, when we were getting ready to look at the second marking period and really look at how the year's been going, I did notice specifically are, I think it would be like a lot of the bilingual children, the English language learners, some of the grades, the way they were suffering with there and I really would like to see it taken into consideration and what we could do to help with those children where they might need some better resources to help increase their grades. And then the other piece would really be some of the services that are going on in school for children that have IEPs would be another piece because certain resources that are needed sometimes with extra time in regards to, let's say, an OT session, things like that. This counselors that are there sometimes are saying they're out of time for the students. And I think trying to find additional time for these people or adding extra staff, things like that, really that we could help benefit the students better with that would be two of the things that I would look at.
Thank you. Crystal?
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to add on to what Eden was saying and that's as far as the English learners. In my school, what we have, we have a lot of times, it's not just the children not understanding, but it's the lack of understanding as far as the parents. The parents don't understand English to help their children. So I was thinking like, is there a way that we can help the parents so they can assist their children? Like with the parents being non-English, you know, not non-speak, non-English speaking? That was my concern. Like, is there a way we can help the parents learn English so they can assist their students, their children?
Thank you both. I also have shared the same concern as you both. Being as a, I speak Mandarin Chinese and when I was young in public school, my parents did not know how to help me. I have to help myself. So I can see now as a parent, there are those, you know, parents that can't read or write or speak English, how can they help their children? I completely share your concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Emery, do you have some questions? Okay, I'm gonna get into Amber and Abel.
Hi, welcome ladies. So my question to you is, I think that one of the things we have to strongly express from the start is that there is a huge time commitment to this. So we're talking about a monthly meeting that can go anywhere from two to more hours, more hours than I want to say, because I'm gonna leave you there for tonight. But it is a huge time commitment, emails, school visits, face check-ins. So are you prepared for that level of commitment, you know, for the next year and a half?
Let's start with Crystal.
Well, I'm prepared for almost anything. I roll with the punches. I do what I can to be available. As I said, I'm a stay-at-home mom. So after school, I'm with my children, but during the day, I'm free, you know? I would just have to work around the meeting times, you know? Let me know in advance and I'll make it happen. That's basically it.
Okay, Eden?
Sure. So like I said, I do work from home, but I'm able to bring my office anywhere for better, lack of terms. I've even been able to bring my computer with me to take care of certain things in the school when I've needed. But honestly, I, even when my kids have activities, like right now they're in an activity, I'm able to be here on our meeting. So I kind of bring them where they need to do things and I kind of keep going with what I need to do. So I kind of make myself available. If I need to get a sitter, I get a sitter. So I kind of make myself available for anything I need to.
Thank you. So I do wanna comment that we have our CEC meetings typically the first Wednesday of every month and we typically start at 7:00 PM. Although we really need to be done by 9:30, we typically go well beyond that time. I know that the governor had extended the exception to the public meeting law, meaning that we can meet virtually. We as a council have decided to meet in a hybrid situation where some of us come in person and the others do meet virtually. But eventually, I'm assuming there'll come a time where the governor will put an end to that extension and we may be required to meet in person. If we want to meet virtually, then we will have to disclose our location to the public, which you may not wanna do. So does that present a problem for either one of you if we are called to come back and meet in person?
As long as I'm, sorry. As long as I haven't, I'm sorry. As long as I have advance notice, I'm fine. I'll, like I said, I'll make it happen.
Eden?
Same, same thing. As long as I know, I make arrangements, so.
Understood. Usually the first meeting of the calendar year is in July and we schedule the monthly meetings on that July meeting, so you'll know. So we're meeting this evening at a calendar meeting on Tuesday because Monday tomorrow is parent-teacher conferences. So when we schedule the meeting dates, we typically go through it for the whole year in July. So you'll know well in advance. Okay, so now that I went through the council members that are here in person, I'd like to go to the council members that are on remotely for any questions. Let's start. I see Rashmi on the top left-hand corner. Rashmi, do you have any questions for the applicants?
Yes, hi. Hi Eden, hi Crystal. I hope you don't mind me with your first name, not just to make it informal, more friendlier. Hi. So I'll ask the same question in a different way. I will address this question to Eden because she's on my Zoom meeting screen. You're just next to me. What is the, what is the core value in your heart that you see yourself bring on the table? Not as a parent, not specific to a parent of District 25, which we are truly representing, but as a parent in whole? Like what is the core value that you want to bring on the table?
I think for me, it's really focusing in on those children that need that extra care and not necessarily like a special education child, but where they just need that extra little push and really helping those parents that don't necessarily know what's available to them and how they can get that extra help and really working with those parents and those children to show them what's out there for them and how we can get the help that they need to them.
Okay, thank you. Crystal, the same question, but in a little bit different form. You have, let's say you're doing, you're having your PTA meeting and you touched upon a really important subject, parents who do not speak English as their first language. And your PTA meeting, so what, what is the main language of your PTA meetings? Are they bilingual? And if they are, they are in which, which two languages? Or they're only in English?
Our PTA meetings are in English, but we do have people that are able to translate if need be. And we have, we have Mandarin speakers, we have Spanish speakers as well.
So if, if a parent who is not an English language as their first language, if their core belief is very different than the core belief of the school, for example, if the school believes in writing as their main agenda for the next marking period, but they believe in map as a marking, as their thing, how would you try to negotiate that between the school and the parent and making that language barrier closer? Basically trying to make a parent understand when they're not able to understand the principles of a school system because their language is a barrier?
Well, we would get a translator, that's first and foremost, to make sure that they understand what, you know, what needs to be translated to them so their child can get the appropriate education. This is what we try to do all the time. It's not just, we're telling them, this is what needs to be done and they don't understand it and we don't try to find options for them to, you know, understand what needs to be done. So we would look for ways to help them understand what needs to be done in a language that they can understand. We have many different Spanish speakers, Mandarin speakers. We have sites that they can go on, like everything, like we have ClassDojo and there are different languages. They click on different, different links and it has different languages that come up. So there are different, we have different options, different ways to help the non-English speakers understand what, you know, what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Is that question also directed to Eden?
No, it just, that's fine, yeah. I wanted to just ask the same question in a different way. So it's, it's the question specific to the candidates, what they said earlier in their comments.
Thank you Rashmi. Sanaa, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you Joe. Can you guys hear me fine?
You can hear me.
Perfect. Hi Crystal, hi Eden. Welcome to both of you and it's wonderful that you're both taking the initiative. It's wonderful to see you both here tonight. My question is going to lean on the very first question that Wendy asked of you. And you both mentioned, you know, parent support, there being this gap. I apologize for the background noise. That's my son having a Goat Lego. So the question that I wanna know is, what are some of the things that you think that CEC can do to support parent learning, to bridge that gap and equip our parents to become better, you know, facilitators of, of education and helping their children through their journey of education? Either one of you can go first.
I'll go first, I don't mind. I think that one of the things is maybe help facilitate sessions that kind of educate a little bit more about things and continuing to offer translation like we always do across the board for all education things. But really, if there's specific learning aspects that their child is struggling on, maybe helping to set up a session for the parents to say, hey, this is what your child's struggling on, why don't we do a session with you in that language where the parent can maybe even learn a little bit more about what the child's struggling on in that language and work through something like that for the children might be more beneficial. So the parent is learning yet at the same time with the child, but in the language that they need to then work backwards a little bit with them as well as then moving forwards to the language of the child is supposed to be learning it in, in English for school.
Thank you Eden. Crystal?
Adding on to what she said, have workshops. That's what a lot of times we do. Like we had one today. Have workshops, have it in different languages, you know, have translators there to assist, you know, to let the parents know, this is what needs to be done, this is what, you know, this is how we're doing it, this is, this is what your child is learning and this is how you can help them in, in their language. Just workshops that leave work wonders.
Thank you.
Thank you Sanaa. I'm gonna move next to Samuel. Do you have any questions Samuel?
Yes, hi Eden, hi Crystal. My name is Song. Nice to meet you guys all tonight. I'm gonna get to the, well, we're first, we're all here as a parents and we're all here not because of our selfish reason, but we wanna be part of a support to our children and, and we're representing a parent. So my question will be, are there any specific issues you'd like to bring to the council? I want to see what kind, what kind of issues that you see as a parents and how you're gonna bring it up to CEC and how we're gonna cooperate each other to support and help students whose, children who's going through these issues? So are there any specific issues you'd like to bring to the council?
Well, I just, social, social emotional issues, like, you know, the pandemic, it took a toll on everyone, especially on children. And I think they need more social, social emotional help within the school. Like we do have counselors, you know, they work, they, they'll, they do a wonderful job, but I believe more social, social emotional learning and coping skills and things of that nature are needed in schools.
Eden?
Okay. So I agree with what Crystal's saying, but to piggyback off of that, I think not only social emotional, but I think that to tail into that, really going into bullying as well, is a big piece of that. I think the counselors can only do so much by themselves. And I think one counselor for a school really can't trigger in as much as they would like to. So seeing what other resources we can bring into the schools to help with that aspect of social emotional, like for dealing with the pandemic for children and for bullying and everything, to bring it all together, to like do sessions with the kids, maybe by grade or things like that, and really look at overall what we can do for them to just bridge that gap is more like how I wanna kind of bring it all together.
Thank you Eden. Thank you Samuel. I don't know if, Michelle Frederick, are you available? Do you wanna ask any questions?
I'm here.
Hi Michelle, do you have any questions for the candidate?
Um, yes. First of all, I wanna say present because I didn't say present before, sorry, I'm driving home. Um, okay, so how are you guys doing? So my question is, what research have you guys done to prepare yourself for the role you're gonna take on, on the council?
I'll go. So I actually have a member of our PTA who actually has previously served on the councils plus, oh, I have spoken to her a lot to get her input. And I've also done a lot of reading online through the board of my website to see about the council. So I've been kind of doing my own reading each day about that as well, just to see what the role entails and everything like that. So I think that would be my big answer for you, to put it simply.
I've done my own research as well and I also had the CEC liaison meet with our PTA. Well, I didn't have her myself, but she, you know, she joined our PTA as a guest speaker and I had a meeting, we had a meeting with the principal as well.
Is that Emery and Abel sitting to my right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if there are any other members that came on, CEC members that have questions. Is Mr. Chow here? Mr. Chow, do you have any questions for our candidate?
Uh, no, I'm good. I'm just listening. I'll be in shortly. My wife and daughter just got home. I'll be on my way.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a few minutes away.
We'll see you soon. So I know it's a brief meeting, I just wanna circle back to roles and responsibilities on the CEC to the, to the applicant. So often, I'm probably the oldest member that sits on this board and can tell you from experience that many times you are as an advocate for the parents in your community, you are put in a position where you may not have a personal opinion about something or you may feel very strongly about something, but realize that your community feels very strongly about something else. So it's something that I, you know, had, had to deal with in the past. And I ask both of you, if you have any issues or do you see any problems in representing your community even though it may go against your personal agenda? I'm not sure.
I'll answer that.
Comment on that.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. So no, if I'm representing the community, I will gladly speak up for what the community's thoughts are and their feelings are, even if it's not to say what I 100% agree with at that time. I will represent who I need to represent because that's the job I'm taking on at that point.
Thank you Crystal.
Yeah. Well, I believe that being part of the committee, that's our responsibility, you know, serving the community and every, you have to have good judgment, you know? We, we have to listen, we have to communicate, we have to acknowledge that everybody is not gonna be in agreeance. We're not gonna agree with everybody, with what everyone says. They're not gonna agree with what we say, but at the end of the day, we have to remember what our goal is, you know? And that's speaking up for the community and what they need. And that's speaking up for the community and what they need. We have to remember, like, again, everybody's not gonna be, not gonna agree, but you have to be a team player. You have to agree to disagree and always use that good judgment and make sure you remember what the goal is, ultimate goal. And that goal in this case is advocating for the, our students and our community.
Thank you. So, yeah, I, I do wanna make it clear that you are always parents of students in your community. So if you have a statement or you have something that you want to be known as a parent, then you have every right to say that as a parent, but you will have to basically explain that you're saying that as a parent and not as a Community Education Council member. Because things that you say public would have to be voted on before the council and it would have to be agreed upon by the council before you make a statement as a council member. So there is a difference there. I'm not saying that you have to keep your voice down, but you can speak up as a parent. But if you take on the role, you have to be very particular and very cautious about what you state uh, about the, uh, Community Education Council because you are speaking on behalf of the community as a representative of the community. So I thank you both. Um, I wish we had more time to sit and talk to you. Um, I'm going to, uh, during the calendar meeting, I'm gonna ask if there's any motion to, uh, approve either one of you, uh, uh, to the, uh, council. And then we're gonna have to take a vote because again, I need to be clear that you are both applying for one seat. We have eight members. We're looking for a ninth member. And then we have two seats that need to be filled by the borough president, which are not elected seats. Um, I hope that you, um, are able to join us at our calendar meeting, which will start in a few minutes. And I thank you for your time and we respect you and we thank you for applying for the position. And good luck to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I know that we have members of the public coming on. I'm gonna take a two-minute break and then we'll get started with our calendar meeting. It's now seven oh six, correct?